Go ahead and get started this evening. The first item we need to address is a public hearing. We have two public hearings. First hearing is a proposed rate increase for sewer services within and outside the corporate limits of the city of Warrenton, Missouri political subdivision. Are you going to address that, Gabrielle?
I would like to make part of the public hearing record the municipal code by reference and the public hearing notice that was published in the Warren County Record on May 15, 2014. For the sewer and the water, there was a proposed 5 percent increase. So, for the city in Truesdale residential amount, the proposed amount per the 1,000 gallon minimum is $9.74 and then all over that, $3.37 over. For the outside city limits residential rate, it is $19.47 for the first 1,000 gallons and then $6.73 per 1,000 gallons over that. And then the city industrial and commercial is $10.35 for the 1,000 gallon minimum and $3.48 per 1,000 gallons over that.
Any questions for Gabrielle? Anybody in the audience would like to address the board on the sewer issues? Then I'm going to close that public hearing, open the second public hearing, and that's a proposed rate increase for the use and consumption of water within and outside the corporate limits of the city of Warrenton, Missouri political subdivision.
All right. I would like to make part of the public hearing record the municipal code by reference and the public hearing notice that was published in the Warren County Record on May 15, 2014. This one also has the 5 percent rate increase in the proposed amount. So, the city residential would be $5.96 for the 1,000 gallon minimum and then $3.84 per 1,000 gallons over that. The outside city limits residential rate would be $18.95 for the 1,000 gallon minimum and then $8.12 per 1,000 gallons over that. And then the city industrial and commercial rate is $10.19 for the 1,000 gallon minimum and then $4.08 per 1,000 gallons over that.
Any questions from the board? Anyone in the audience want to address that issue? Thank you. I'll close that public hearing and we'll open the Board of Alderman meeting for the city of Warrenton on June 3, 2014. I'm going to ask Alderman Dryer to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Stand, face the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
First item on the agenda is approval of minutes, executive session minutes, from May 6, 2014.
Make a motion that we approve the executive session minutes from May 6, 2014.
I'll second that.
Motion by Alderman Kessley, seconded by Alderman Sluter to approve the executive session minutes from May 6, 2014. Roll call, please.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Sluter?
Yes.
Alderman Hawley?
Yes.
Alda Person Castily?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0. Item 3B, recreational work session meeting minutes from May 5, 2014. Any questions or concerns? I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the recreation work session meetings from May 5, 2014.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Sluter, seconded by Alderman Dryer to approve the recreational work session meeting minutes from May 5, 2014. Roll call, please.
Alderman Sluter?
Yes.
Alderman Hawley?
Yes.
Alda Person Castily?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0. Item 3C, regular board meeting minutes from May 20, 2014. Any discussion, concerns, or corrections?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from May 20, 2014.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Clark, seconded by Alderman Hawley to approve the regular board meeting minutes from May 20, 2014. Roll call.
Alderman Hawley?
Yes.
Alda Person Castily?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
I'm staying, I won't hear.
Alderman Sluter?
Yes.
Motion carried 5-0 with one extension. Item 4, hearing from the public. Each meeting, we give the public an opportunity to come forward and address the board, ask any questions or discussions if you would like. We just ask that you keep your remarks civil and keep the time factor to five minutes or less. So, if anybody would like to address the board, please come forward at this time. No one ever wants to talk to us. Maybe we're that threatening or maybe we're doing our job. I don't know. Not hearing from the public, I'm going to extend that same courtesy to the Board of Alderman and we'll start with Alderman Dryer on that end, work our way down. So, anything from the board?
I have nothing.
Alderman Sluter?
No.
Wow, okay, I'll go. I was really pleased with some of the purple that's showing up around town for the cancer awareness, so I think that was a really good way to start the week for the Relay for Life. It's always a good thing for our town, the relay, and I look forward to seeing everybody on Friday night so we can celebrate and remember those who have had cancer and are surviving cancer. I would also like to thank the crews that are working on Walton Street. Those sidewalks look really good and I've seen some posts on Facebook, some people that are pleased with having the new sidewalks going down the street, so those look really nice. And then finally, the other thing that I wanted to talk about is I did receive a call from a lady at Lakeview and Second Street last week and Guy and Chief's crew have gone out and looked at this. We have a hearing impaired child at the corner of Third and Lakeview and I know Guy has looked into signs for that and would like to consider that to get those in placement for the signs. Guy, how much were the signs? We had to put up four signs in order to cover the intersection. There's actually going to be two hearing impaired children on that street this summer. Okay. I don't know if that's something that we need a motion for to get approved by the board to have signs put up?
We would and we would need to have it as an agenda item.
So, at the next meeting, if we could put that on the agenda so that we have that. I mean, this is a scary thing that the kids fly, not the kids, the traffic flies up and down Lakeview pretty quickly and we already had a near miss, so waiting till the next meeting does risk the life of a child, but if that's what we need to do in order to legally get it done, I don't know how else to go about that, but I would hate for the summer to have those children out there and be at risk.
That's it?
Yep.
Alderman Ock?
Nothing.
Alderman Clark?
I'd have to make a comment that the Special Olympics that the chief was in charge of, to me, looked very good and went off very nice. It looked like your crew was working very hard.
They were indeed, thank you.
How far did you run?
I drove.
Just a question.
You've been administrator.
Are you finished?
Did you put the torch on your car?
I did not.
I didn't make it back. I had a doctor tomorrow that day, kind of got hung up in some traffic and I tended to be back and didn't quite make it. Alderman Castily stole my thunder on pink to town purple. I've had tons of calls from people saying, "What are those things around the light poles? Why all the purple things?" So, I think it's catching on. All the board didn't get the memo about wearing purple tonight, but some of them got it, so we'll work on that in the future. I do want to thank Alderman Clark for attending a couple of meetings that I was not able to attend, thanking for filling in on the tourism committee the other morning, and thanking for filling in for me on an activities meeting with the school activities director. I appreciate that. The president of the board sometimes gets stuck with some extra duties there and you're doing a good job of picking up the slack. The other thing I want to share with the public and the board, we did close on the Willow Road property, sometimes referred to as a Seager property. Last week, we were able to close. We had two little snafus earlier, nothing to do with the city. It was more legal snafus from the family and we were able to work through the court systems and we've got that taken care of. The other thing I want to mention to you, Melody called this to my attention, we do have an ethics training seminar coming up the 24th of June, pretty important, I think. Whoever can attend, I encourage you to try to attend the ethics training. We all need to keep abreast and keep up to date on that. Even Councilor Gervil is required to attend ethics training through the state because you keep your license active, I guess.
Absolutely, two hours of CLE credit every year.
Okay. So, that's the 24th of June at 6 o'clock here in our chamber. We've also invited all the other county entities, the city of Truesdale, county officials, school officials. Who else we missed?
O'Fallon's coming.
The who?
O'Fallon, Winsfield.
Oh, O'Fallon and Winsfield on there. Okay, so we might have a good crowd for that, so that should be good. That's all I have, so I'm ready to move on through the agenda. First item on the agenda is Country Lane number 2 and on my thing, it says Roxanne Higgins wants to address the board. Roxanne, are you here?
Yes, I am.
Would you come forward to the podium so we can? We're recording everything and we video everything, so we can't hear you if you're not up here.
My mother made me promise not to cuss. My name is Roxanne Higgins. I live at 706 Second Street. My husband and I moved to Warrenton in 1999. We've experienced growth with Warrenton. We've also experienced when every town struggled, we also struggled, laid off, not working, but I think Warrenton plus us, my husband and I, are going through a growth spurt, so once again, I'm happy where we are in Warrenton. My complaint is number 2, Country Lane. Fifteen years now, it's like Groundhog Day. I call, I call the police, I call code enforcement and complain. I've sent pictures, I don't know if anybody received pictures, but this is what I see every morning when I open my door. Now, most of the people on the block have really worked hard. We've got siding going up always. We had front porch, we had siding, we've got a pool. Everybody seems to be proud of their neighborhood, but number 2. We've even formed our own neighborhood watch, feel when we say something, it's either ignored or explained away. I've taken pictures of the back of the house where the exterior of the house has fallen off and it looks like black mold. I'm scared to go out there. Well, they came one day and they just pushed it in and fixed it. I don't care how, I don't believe the black mold's going by, but now we've got it again, bigger holes, black depths, I don't know what it is. I'm almost a prisoner in my own home because I don't want to go out there. The grass is as tall as my fence, the trees are dead, limbs have fallen in my yard on my fence, and a big thing right now, this beginning of the year, is vermin. I have chased raccoons, rats, squirrels, possums, and snakes out of my yard. I have dogs, so when the animals come in my yard, I have to call the police or code enforcement or somebody, and if there's somebody there, they will come help. I was told to go out and poke a possum once. I asked him if they'd come out and poke the possum, because to me, possum means plain dead. Well, it was dead and he picked it up and he put it in my trash and I told him if the trash man raised game, I'm pointing him out, but they didn't, so I can't. We've watched children being taken out of there. We've watched adults fighting, I have personally, fighting in the front yard, men, women, 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 men, mother. It's two sons and a mother, but yet I've counted 19 people there at night. I don't know where they sleep, I don't want to know where they sleep, but it's wrong. Again, with the vermin, I can't stand it anymore. I called the police and asked them if I could shoot the vermin with a pellet gun. They said no, and I do understand, but still, my house is being drug down to the depths of hell because of one house, number 2, Country Lane. We have sat there and watched dead bodies come out of there. There's something going on, I can't say what and refuse to give an opinion, but this is a blight to Warrenton. I cannot get what I have put in my house out of it now because of number 2, Country Lane. We were told we could come last week to the public hearing, nobody showed up, nobody. We showed up, nobody else. Finally, we got to talk to a man named Jack, said, "Please give me a chance." Chance is 15 years, Jack, this is every year. They've got to have proof that I complained, that this is more than just a home for three people, activity at night. I've had people crawl through my ditch at night. My husband sometimes works night, he's a union ironworker. He takes jobs no matter where and when, and I'll call him and say, "I'm not going out there. I'm not going out at night." I can hear the music, I can hear the screaming. I've had men, grown men, come out of that house to my fence and pee, urinate in my yard. I have this huge fridge door I'm so proud of, I can't open it. One thing I don't want to see again is one more penis. I'm tired of it. If anybody here can help, if you can send me to the right place that I can get something, somebody say, "Roxanne, we hear you, we know it's a problem and we're trying to take care of it." Even the help in the neighborhood didn't help. We think there's some kind of weird activity. There's cars parked there 15, 20 minutes and they leave, only so other people can walk up or more cars can come up. I don't know what to do anymore, I'm lost.
Do we understand?
I think you do, but 15 years this has been going on.
Can we ask you a few questions?
Sure.
Your yard backs up to this?
The side of my yard and the side of her yard, the back of her yard, the side of my yard. The people next to us has improved, the people on the corner have improved, we've done nothing but improve. I've also got a neighbor that's putting on siding. The guy across the street has just refurnished his whole house. It's a nice neighborhood, established, old trees, old people. We don't get much kids, but now we get young adults and whatever it is that congregates there.
I noticed in the pictures you sent us, there was a sign, it looked like the sign was on your property.
The sign is on my property.
What did that sign say?
I have a dog, my dog just passed, but I have a dog that one of the children, to one of the men that live over there, was shooting with a pellet gun, a BB gun, and I called the police and they said, "What I need to do is put a sign up facing their yard." So, that's exactly what we did. It faces their yard saying, "Beware a dog," and at the end of their yard, it also says it, and to be on the safe side, I think, Brian, put it on the bottom and the other side, so it's not like only they have to beware of the dog.
Are you aware whether Country Lane has a homeowners association or anything?
No, but we have gone over there and, you know, tried to stake ourselves out at night and try to, you know, sometimes just the presence of somebody living there, the activity will go away or they'll all go inside, but no. I don't know about an association. I called and gracefully Karen and Tony called me back and said, you know, "Just come up and explain what's going on and we'll see if there is anything to do." I've asked if maybe they were, and I'm not assuming anything, if maybe they were kneecap, because if they were kneecap, they were totally, you know, messing with kneecap. I had to work with that a little bit for years. I was monitored to the end of monitoring, but if this is something that somebody's paying for them to live there, they're screwing the system bad.
Do you personally know the people?
I know, when she introduced herself 15 years ago, she introduced herself as Terminal, but I know her name is Tammy. I don't care to know the last name, we tried to be cordial, but they don't own the house. The house is owned by somebody else in town, but it is beyond shame.
I would venture to say probably every board member's probably driven by there and looked at the place.
I understand everybody's aware, but.
The pictures are good, very informative, you know, I think we get that picture pretty well. Now, we have to decide and I don't want to put.
Mayor and board, I did want to, this was on our agenda. We met today and discussed this property.
Not the first, I'm sorry.
I understand that, and honestly, 15 years, it's hard to deal with and the people going.
They know my name and code enforcement.
I understand, I know, I understand that, but this was the first time we've kind of counseled on, okay, what are we going to do with this property? We have two pending nuisance proceedings against them. What happened last week?
The 28th?
The 28th.
Already showed up.
Well, what happened was, we actually rescheduled those because of staffing issues with the police department because it was the same day as the torch run, and so they got rescheduled. I would encourage you to be there because we will take your testimony regarding that property. The nuisance will only deal with essentially the exterior of the residence, things that are violating the code issue. Jack is aware of it, Jack is, it's one of our.
I met him the 28th.
Basically, and where we go from here is, we've created a special docket for housing issues in our municipal court where Jack's there, the judge is there, I myself am there, Terry's usually there as well, and so essentially what will happen is, if they don't fix it within the time given after the nuisance hearing, assuming the nuisance officer finds that this is evidence of grass over 12 inches and a piece of property in disarray, and the owner of the property will be notified of that hearing as well, then they will start getting, being issued summonses every day. That's the enforcement mechanism we have for the tenant and also possibly the owner depending on what the arrangement is, and we'll start bringing it into the municipal court. This is part of the reason we created the property maintenance docket or the code violation docket, so we can track it month to month and they don't get away from us. I'll tell you, this is the first time we've met on it, we did meet on this today, we did talk about it, where we are at with the nuisance enforcement on it. Some of the other activity, I don't know timeframe wise when those events occurred, if they occurred. Well, I understand that, but as far as over the last 15 years, the only thing I can say is, our mechanism we have is, if you see someone out there and they expose themselves to you, you have to contact the police, make your report, be a witness, cooperate as a witness so we can prosecute them because that's not behavior.
And he got in their face.
Nobody answered the call? Nobody ever responded from the police department?
We gave them our name, phone number, address.
That night you called?
Yes, that time, that day, it was daytime that he come out and exposed himself.
3:30, 4 o'clock in the afternoon.
Well, and so what I'd like to do, not to belabor the board meeting, but, you know, you know, if we could, you guys could meet with the chief or meet with the lieutenant or someone designated so we can track those calls, see what happened, make sure a ball was not dropped on that, but those incidents such as that, we have to get the police call, we have to get a complaint signed, so then we can prosecute it as those things come up, and I really, I don't have the information on that issue. The only thing I have, mayor and board, is that it is on our hot list of properties, it's one we met about today. These have already been in process for two separate code violations. By code and by state law, we have to go through that administrative hearing procedure. I would welcome you to be there because it's an opportunity for you to give the hearing officer, which would be a designated by the chief of police, information with regards to the state of the property, then it'll be an order given, you have to bring this property in compliance within this period of time. If they do not bring it within compliance, then, such as the weeds, the city typically will go in and mow the weeds, mow the yard down themselves and then put it as a lien against the property. And also, the other property issues, they'll be ordered and if they don't comply, they can be issued citations in municipal court and every day is a violation. So, we do have enforcement mechanisms, we are working on it. Some of them take a little bit of time, I apologize if they've not been immediately responsive.
I'm going to work with you, this is my first time.
As Jack said, just give us a little bit of a chance and if you guys have issues, you obviously know how to talk to the mayor and board, get on the agenda and let us know feedback ways. I don't know that we're going to be able to solve all the problems because there are tenants that are there and some of the activities they may be doing may not be illegal, such as.
I will not say what I think, but what.
I understand that, that's probably a good idea to not say that because I'm aware of what you guys speculate.
I appreciate the form and being able to voice this.
Absolutely.
It was the not getting any recognition.
Yes.
You know, the one guy I speak to a lot is John. John's a good guy, he'll come out, he'll drive by and look at it, but then I don't know if his hands are tied or what, but he's like, you know, "We're working with it."
We have, we have two current pending nuisance hearings being set, that we've gone through the process to notify the owner and notify the occupants.
This is wonderful.
Yeah, so we're in process.
I feel like I made headway today if nothing else.
But that was already in course before today.
I appreciate what you're saying and I am willing to back off and see if something can happen. It's just affecting a wonderful neighborhood.
Understand.
We know everybody there. If we go on vacation, we know they're going to watch our yard, you know, but.
When is the hearing?
I don't have that information, I probably should have, knowing that this was going to be on the agenda tonight, but you can contact the city tomorrow.
You've got it.
We can give you the information for the hearing.
Should they ask for, when they contact the city?
Should they ask for Jack? Jack, yeah.
Jack's good.
Ask for Jack.
We bet his car. Tony, Karen, I appreciate this, I appreciate you calling back and talking to me, both of you. I feel like I've been somewhat vindicated. I just appreciate you all letting me put in my two cents of what's going on. I know you're aware, let's just hope we can do something and we're willing to work with anybody. Thank you all.
Are you liberated to tell us who the landlord is?
I know, but I won't say.
I don't have that information in front of me, Gary, but we can find out.
I just don't think it's fair for me to reveal.
That's true. We will, I think the board will kind of keep a close eye on this issue and you do have to give us a little time to work through the.
I am willing, I'm willing, since somebody said, "Okay, we will be on and we see what your problem is," and I will work with you 101 percent.
Very good. Thank you for coming out tonight. I'm going to move down the list to item number 8, liquor license renewal for 2014, 2015. Any concerns or issues there that we need to know about? Chief, you're kind of in charge of that?
Yeah, there were no issues.
No issues?
No explicit calls.
I think we still have three pending as well.
Okay, that are not on this list?
Yeah. Okay. But no explicit calls to any of these that raise concerns?
No.
I make a motion to approve the liquor license for the applicants on our list.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Alderman Clark, seconded by Alderman Sluter to approve the liquor license renewals for 2014, 2015 as indicated on our redoal applications. Any further discussions or concerns? Roll call, please.
Alda Person Castily?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Sluter?
Yes.
Alderman Hawley?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0. Mr. Gavers, Public Works Director, what do you got for us?
Two items I have. One is approval for manhole repairs for $100,000. It was budgeted for $200,000. They give a price by linear foot and our average is, usually our average manhole is about four foot in diameter and 15 foot deep, and that each manhole averages about $3,975. Some will be shallower, some will be deeper, not all the manholes will need a full lining. Sometimes they just line the chimney, which is the top part coming down where the manhole lid and ring meets, so we have the possibility of doing more manholes that need to be lined. The ones that are brick, we're going to line and seal them up. The Spectra Tech is out of Indiana, but their salesman is in, lives in Manchester, Missouri, and he will be here on site when the company shows up.
Guy, just because the person next to me is going to ask, I'm going to ask first. The bid is actually $99,375. Why are we asking for 100 even though I know it's only, you know, $500, $600 difference? But, I mean.
Just, I rounded it off to 100,000 because it's going to be, it could be closer, because there's not an exact depth. We didn't measure every manhole and pinpoint how much needs to be lined.
Okay.
So, the company will come in and we'll look at the manholes that we already have picked out that needs to be addressed, but some of them might be 12 foot deep, some of them might be eight foot deep, some of them might just need the chimney lined and not the whole manhole.
So, is it possible that it won't even be 99?
No, I'm going to spend, I'm going to spend. So the company will come in, and we'll look at the manholes that we already have picked out that needs to be addressed. But some of them might be twelve foot deep, some of them might be eight foot deep, some of them might just need the chimney lined and not the whole manhole.
So is it possible that it won't even be ninety-nine?
I'm just, no, I'm going to spend, I'm going to spend it.
That's what we're afraid of.
That's what I heard now. So that speed loader-
Realistically, I'm going to get as much as I can get for a hundred thousand dollars. It might be twenty-seven manholes that need to be repaired. A lot of times your issue is where the ring and lid meets the top of the concrete cone, so they might be able to clean that out, line that inner ring, which is a flexible polyurethane, and seal it that way, wherever iron i is coming in at.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we go with the bid from Spectra Tech LLC out of Noblesville, Indiana, and allow a budget amount of a hundred thousand for the project.
Second.
I do have a question, not the question she posed.
Let me get the, could you hang on till I get the motion taken here? Motion made by Alderman Castily, seconded by Alderman Dreyer to approve Spectra Tech LLC out of Noblesville, Indiana, with a budget amount of one hundred thousand. Now I'm ready for discussion.
If they, are these manholes always above grade? Because we do have projects where we elevate manholes.
There is some through the creek that we've raised them up above grade, and that's some of the ones we're going to address, to line the inside of them so they're sealed from there. So when the creek comes up, we don't have any iron i in that part of it.
So none of the manholes you picked out are below grade right now? They're all above, and they have issues?
No, there's some below grade too.
And will that be adjusted then, or fixed at the time?
Well, they're, the manholes are at grade, that's correct.
Okay.
The ones that are in the yard, most of them are brick, so they'll line the whole manhole that are brick. The ones that we need to get up out of the street and get in the grade level, we'll do them, and then they'll come in and do your lining.
All right. That's all.
That'd be nice to have that project done.
Any other questions?
It's never done.
Oh, yeah.
Is that after all yours, Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alder Person Castily?
Yes.
Motion carried six zero. Item nine B, test order number nine, water main crossing of I-70 for professional services.
This is to have the engineering part permits and that done for the waterline boards under seventy through Gonzalez Engineering. And this is the permits, the putting it out for bid, bid tabs, pretty much to take care of the whole thing, recommending the contractor that we need to do it, dealing with DNR and MODAD because we're going on there a federal highway.
Kind of a cheap project, too, isn't it?
Yeah, it's seventy thousand dollars, but it comes out to be thirty-five thousand per bore.
For each bore?
Yeah.
But that's not what we're paying for right here?
No.
No, we're just, what are we-
This is just to get the information, put it out for bid, the specs, contractor, permits through DNR and MODAD. We don't really, it's already been approved through DNR, through our engineering for the five-year program that we had through Cochrane. We're going on five years.
And we already approved Gonzalez.
I'm sorry?
We already approved Gonzalez as the engineering company, right? Last year?
Yes, yeah.
They're our general engineer.
General engineer.
Well, that was my question. Since I've been up here for almost two years, year and a half, whatever, we've used Gonzalez consistently. Could you give us a history of why we're using Gonzalez? Did we start on another project? Did they bid for the business years ago, and we just continue to use them? Or, I'm just curious.
We went out for a general contract for RFQs, I believe, for, and then when we had the water issue for the wells and everything going, we had, we called Gonzalez, and they helped us through our water issues. And then we went out for RFQs for the wastewater plant, so that was a separate base deal. This here, it's just a general, general contract with them.
I was just kind of curious, reading this, you see their name constantly?
And that's-
Seeing up here what the relationship was and how it got established.
Water and sewer, and my goal for the upcoming year is to try to get another engineering company for our sidewalk streets, stuff like that. So we have them on hand, so when a project does come up, we're not putting out RFQs for every little piece of sidewalk here or little street here that we have somebody on board.
Okay.
Are we addressing this in an ordinance form?
Yes, sir.
Or is this a separate thing?
There's no ordinance.
There is an ordinance on it, so we really don't have to do anything with this now?
No, sir.
Outside of any other discussions, we might, is everybody fine with that? Okay, we're good, Guy.
Thank you.
You were fairly cheap tonight.
No, no big, well-
Only a hundred grand.
Pretty high.
Considering, you know, the four or five we're talking about.
You haven't found out the hundred he saved, but he spent it off.
I don't know, I saw those budget items for that bore and what that's going to cost. It's kind of frightening, what it costs to get under the highway, so this might be just the cheap part of it. Terry Thorne, Director of Operations, Finance Director.
My first item for you this evening is the report from the Tourism Commission that met on May twenty-seventh. There were three requests that they considered. The first was from John Claire with the Farmer's Market. He had a request for advertising for a hundred and thirty-four dollars and forty cents. I believe that was advertising in the newspaper that he had placed. The second was from the City of Warrenton for fifteen thousand seven eighty-five fifty, which is the annual half portion or event coordinator for the past year for those programs. And the third was from Game Time Tournaments for four thousand one hundred and fifty dollars, and it is for advertising through ESPN Radio for tournaments. Tom Hamlet from Game Time is here, if any of you have questions regarding that request.
Yeah, since you, you haven't been here before, and we're kind of moving in a direction where-
Would you like to step up there?
Sure. Since we, since we're starting to use your company more and more, and I noticed your van was out here, can you kind of give us a little background of your company?
Well, absolutely. I personally have ran tournaments in Little League baseball and softball and whatever else you can think of with Little League sports, okay? I have did this for almost twenty years, starting off with umpiring and then just moving all the way up into running my own leagues and some different stuff. And two years ago, a partner of mine, and I'd always just kind of did it on the side just as a little something extra, you know, most, a lot of people do that. Partner, buddy of mine came up and said, you know what, we can take this and we can actually make a company out of it. And, well, Dust League Game Time Tournaments was actually born. And from there, in, the first tournament we ran in two thousand and thirteen had fourteen teams in it. And we just now got finished with our second tournament, Warrenton, running forty-plus teams. So a whole lot's happened in a very small period of time. And as I said, I mean, we really enjoy what we're doing. We've got, we've got quite a bit of experience doing this. We're running leagues, we're doing some different things, and like I said, the, I don't know if I answered your question there or not.
Okay. I was just kind of curious, but we use your company's name a lot in various discussions, so just kind of curious to meet the person, ask whatever questions. So maybe some of you have kids who play sports, maybe you're more familiar with the company.
When you talked about forty teams, where do these teams come from?
Well, the past two tournaments, most of them have come, I, I'm going to use the word local, but local meaning the metropolitan St. Louis area. Obviously, now that school is out, we will draw more teams coming from Oklahoma, Wisconsin, Kansas. We draw teams from a lot around the Midwest that all come into town. Even then, I say local, we've had some coming from Alton, you know, that's, that's a decent drive, and when you play a game at eight o'clock on a Saturday night and your next game's at ten AM on a Sunday morning, you probably aren't making that hour and a half drive home. So these companies, these teams will also still stay at some local venues. Afton, South County, we draw obviously a lot from St. Peters, St. Charles, that's kind of our, our home base of teams. You know, that's where I grew up at, was St. Peters. You know, I went to Francis Howard North High School. I mean, you know, so like I said, but we draw mostly local teams. However, once school's out, we start drawing teams from all around the Midwest.
So what is ESPN Radio? I mean, I'm used to one oh one point one, which is ESPN local, but is that where the ads are run? I don't remember hearing them.
Yes, we, well, we will be running ads. This isn't something that we are currently doing, it's something that we're looking to add on. One of the things that we're requesting part of this money for is our next tournament, which is June fourteenth and fifteenth, right here at the Warrenton Athletic Complex. We would like to, which by the way, we have, I believe it's forty-one teams currently signed up, and we're capped out at like forty-four teams.
Is it softball or baseball?
It's both. Well, the wood, this is a wood bat tournament, so this one is only baseball. The majority of our tournaments are both baseball and softball, but obviously with this being a specialty, wood bat only, softball usually doesn't play with wood bats. So this is all baseball in this one. However, we are wanting to bring ESPN out, they'll bring a band, they're going to park it up there, they're going to do, hopefully do a remote broadcast from the venue for two hours. They'll have their on-air personality and free give me, well, not free, but, you know, give me's and so, it really draw a buzz, I believe. And the reason that we're doing it isn't to draw teams to this tournament, because this one's already, well, it's happening, you know? But it's to, it's to get more people. We're hoping to draw Wentzville and O'Fallon people coming out here to this ballpark and seeing the town, and then moving on from there. You know, so that's what part of this money is for, is for the two-hour remote. That also includes like sixty seconds, what, four sixty-second commercials, ten in the week or week and a half leading up to the event, so that it creates that buzz that this is where people are going to be. And then it's also following up with what we're calling the Fall Tournament Campaign, okay? Now, this one is fifty-eight recorded thirty-second commercials over a two-week schedule. It also includes a hundred and sixty thousand impressions on their website that is what they call geo-targeted. I'm not an IT guy, but I'm pretty sure that just means that it's only going to go to certain places that we kind of tell it where to go to. So we're not drawing people necessarily that wouldn't normally come.
I would like to just make two comments on this. I did go and visit the tournament, and I walked around and was impressed with just what general people had to say, nobody that worked for you, but just general people. One gentleman did state he was, didn't make a tournament in, I believe it was the Chesterfield area, gave yourself a call or gave you a call at last minute, and you were able to accommodate him. He said within ten minutes he was already signed up, and he was very happy with it and had nothing but great things to say about you. Also, Todd did make a phone call, I found out later on, there were two teams that were coming down from, I believe, Wisconsin and-
One was from Wisconsin and one was from Oklahoma.
And due to weather issues, Todd took the time off to make a call and say, you know, if you'd like to come down, you can, but just understand we have weather issues, we may not have the fields open, we don't want you to waste your time. Which, in turn, those people that knew those teams said it went a long way with that. Because normally they just make the ride down and then rain down and that, so, you know, hats off to you for doing well, thank you.
Thought you were going to use your time to talk about the road.
My goodness.
On the road that we're going to be on.
No, you want to be riding on it.
All right, let's move on. Enough for humor.
Thank you, Todd.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we have a motion to approve the tourism recommendation?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Ock, seconded by Alderman Dreyer to approve the Tourism Commission's recommendation in the amount of twenty thousand zero sixty-nine point ninety. Any other questions or concerns? Roll call, please.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alder Person Castily?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Motion carried six zero. How about dental insurance renewal?
It's time for the renewal of our dental insurance, and JW Carroll has gone out to the market and brought us back proposals. One is the renewal with Principal, which is the company that we're currently with. The other is with Delta Dental. And if you look at the bottom of the sheet that you have, the Delta Dental renewal or proposal would actually come out to a three percent increase over where we currently are. If we renew with Principal, it's a seven percent increase over our current premium. Both are highly rated companies, and both, according to JW Carroll, would be companies that would be viable options and equally as well in the marketplace. So I don't see any reason why we would not go with Delta Dental as the low proposal.
That's your recommendation?
Yes.
It looked like the bids, from what I'm seeing, are almost identical, except for the premium.
Yeah. We've had Delta Dental, where I worked for many, many years, and never had any issues working as a new provider. I mean, the thing people generally run into is if their provider was under Principal, but not under Delta Dental, but for the most part, Delta Dental has a wide, wide network, so.
We did look at the providers that are included in their network, and all of the dentists that are in our local area, all the way over to Wentzville, you know, seem to be the same coverage with the two providers. Their lists are almost identical from that perspective, so.
So I'd make a motion to go with the recommendation and put coverage with Delta Dental?
I'll second that.
Motion by Alderman Ock, seconded by Alderman Schluter to approve the bid of Delta Dental. What was the total amount there?
The total premium for the year is thirty thousand seven hundred and thirty-six dollars and thirty-two cents.
Thirty-two cents, okay. Any other questions or concerns? Roll call, please.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alder Person Castily?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Motion carried six zero.
My next item for you is the renewal of the life insurance premium. JW Carroll came back with a renewal quote with Anthem, which is the company we're currently with, that is an increase only of one cent per thousand. So their recommendation is to continue with the current provider with the renewal premium of five thousand three hundred and thirty-five dollars and twenty cents, which is an increase of two hundred and sixty-six dollars and seventy-six cents for the year.
Any questions on the, for Terry on the life insurance?
Make a motion to go with the recommendation to stay with the renewal on the Anthem for life insurance.
Second. Motion by Alderman Ock, seconded by Alderman Clark to take the bid on our life insurance from Anthem in the amount of five thousand three hundred and thirty-five dollars and twenty cents. Any questions or discussions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alder Person Castily?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.[1742.16]
of business is for the mayor to sign the petition. This is for the piece, the large piece of property that was outside the city limits.
Okay.
So we need to bring it into our city.
Just the seventeen acres?
Yes.
The city has to petition the city under the statute, so fingers crossed if you guys vote to approve it.
Yeah, what if the city petitions and votes no?
If you vote no, then obviously we can't have the resolution calling for the public hearing and getting this done, so I think if you do a roll call vote, and it's a, like I said, fingers crossed, a yes vote, then we can have a public hearing to bring it in.
We need a motion for the board to authorize the media to have a resolution.
Yes. Decide to petition.
A petition, I'm sorry.
I don't know.
Is it gonna die because we don't have a motion?
We gotta let the lawyer sweat a little bit.
Well, it's not the only piece of property we own outside the city limits.
Okay.
I'm making a motion to authorize the mayor to sign a resolution for the annexation of property, a petition to annex property in the city of Warrenton.
I'll second.
Motion made by Alderman Ock, seconded by Alderman Schluter, authorizing the mayor to sign a petition for the public hearing?
Requesting annexation.
Oh, requesting annexation for the Willow Road secret property. Does that sound right?
Mm-hmm.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alder Person Kestrelly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Motion carried six-zero. What else?
That's all I have this evening, thank you.
That's it? Okay, Gabrielle, you're up.
Right, the only item I have is the accounts payable for the month in the amount of two hundred thirteen thousand, three hundred thirty-three dollars and ninety-five cents. I'm requesting approval to pay those invoices.
Only question I have is Roger Rowanby, sales and service, three thousand, one hundred eighty-seven dollars to install a transformer or something, but is that related to the lights on the athletic complex?
I'm not sure where we installed the transformer.
Well, it's charged to Cap Athletic Complex, and I'm assuming that's related to lights, right?
I'm sure it would be. I don't remember us having a problem there, but I know we've had quite a few electrical storms this spring, so it very well could be. We can check on that and I can let you know for sure.
I'd like to make a motion that we pay the accounts payable for the amount of two thousand, two hundred thirteen thousand, three hundred thirty-three dollars and ninety-five cents.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Kestrelly, seconded by Alderman Holly to pay the accounts, approve the accounts payable in the amount of two hundred thirteen thousand, three hundred thirty-three dollars and ninety-five cents. Any questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Alder Person Kestrelly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alder Person Kestrelly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alder Person Kestrelly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Motion carried six-zero. Is that it?
That's all I have, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Gabrielle. Economic Development Director, Michelle Slinter.
Good evening. The only thing I have for you tonight is my agenda, or my ED report, sorry.
Any questions for Michelle?
What is a plug and play contact center?
It's a call, previous call center, they wanna find a call center that was already a call center so that they could just walk in, plug in their phones and computers and go.
How big a area would you need for that? I mean, I don't, I don't, I can't visualize how much room you would need.
They want it thirty to fifty thousand square feet for this one.
I mean, they're huge.
Big one.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, they're, they're huge. We looked at, moving our organization, we looked at a couple of call centers, they're really just basically huge warehouses with tons and tons and tons of computer kits, I mean, just people just sitting, all they are.
Gee, I'm not familiar with those, so...
Do restaurants you reach out to, they contact you back or anything?
They have, and unfortunately, we are not on their radar at this time, but I will keep bugging them.
Can you tell us whatever?
One of them was Golden Corral, and off the top of my head, I can't remember who the other one was.
Well, once again, if there's anything we can do to help you establish connections with those or maybe...
Eight more.
Yeah, we can do, I can definitely do that.
I would assume we're not on the radar because of our population size, is that what you said?
That's the majority of it, yes, but I keep trying to sell that we're right on I-70 and great location for them, and a lot of people stop off here when they're going to their places, and that we pull from other communities around us that are smaller, so...
Like, I know for myself, you need help with that, please, I'm gonna state the call.
So, what's the magic number? Ten thousand?
It just depends on the business. I mean, there's some businesses that want ten thousand in a three-mile radius, and there's other businesses that want fifty thousand in a three-mile radius.
Any other questions for Michelle?
Michelle, do you have the maps that show our population within a certain radius from the interchange?
What, do you have an idea or feel for what is that? I was kinda curious.
Off the top of my head, I don't know, Gary. I could get that.
Just curious, I mean, we're talking, are we looking at twenty thousand, are we looking at thirty? I have no idea. Of course, if you go, if the map's drawn toward Wentzville, you get too far in, you're gonna pick up them, so it probably doesn't give you a valid number.
No, it's, well, it's a radius.
Yeah, I'll think the radius is.
It just depends on the restaurant. That would be interesting for us to see, Michelle, I think, to take a look at those maps.
Do we ever refer any of these people who are making that argument to Walmart? Because, I mean, if you go into Walmart, it's obvious they're pulling significantly from, from outside the area, and so if the argument for the restaurant is there's not enough people within the square mileage that we need, Walmart be an example of, this is an exception, because look what's happened at Walmart.
I have not, but, for example, is, the Young Corporation used to own Pizza Hut, Taco Bell, Pizza Hut, Taco Bell, KFC, and Long John Silver's, and so I had sent information to them, trying to get a Long John Silver's here, saying, look, you know, you could already look at your sales from these other companies because they're here, KFC built a brand-new building at the time, and still got no response. I'm like, you know, if we didn't have the individuals here, KFC wouldn't be building a new building, and three of the four companies you owned would not be located here, and still could not get them to locate here.
Do we get good data from Walmart in terms of where their people are or what's, what it's drawing?
I could ask.
Would that be a good tool? Tony Amigo saw this, would that be a good tool, or?
I don't know if Walmart's willing to share that, that would be great information.
Yeah.
Sometimes you can, you can get information from the license plates to kinda figure out where people are from.
Right.
And they will like actually drive through the parking lots and write down that information.
Hmm.
Why don't you do that this weekend?
As soon as I find my purple shirt, I will.
Walmart has it.
Michelle, the real estate developer you were talking about, how big of an area are they looking at, or did they share that with you?
I'm on the lead from RCGA.
Part of the real estate developer, customer location in Warrenton, still reviewing the market?
They did not, yeah, actually, they, they did, I'm sorry, and I sent them several buildings, and they do have one building in particular that they are still looking at, and I keep contacting them, and they have not made a final decision at this time.
Cool. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Anything else for Michelle? Thank you, Michelle.
Mm-hmm.
Chief Hottishaw, you're up.
Good evening, Mayor and Board. First thing I have this evening is approval to move forward with the firing range improvements. Just a quick review on this, it's been a year since we talked about it, but we discovered that there's a fairly safe, actually a very safe section of our sludge field that we can use, it has a great backdrop to it, a huge hill, that we can actually use to build our own range. We were running into difficulty getting out to bench rest. Basically, one officer was assigned to that, we had to have one license per se, and that officer had to always be present. Getting range time out there was becoming increasingly difficult, so that's why we started kinda looking at maybe building our own. We also had some funds that were in the training fund that we could use towards that, which is this five thousand dollars, and it just made sense all the way around to do that. So, now we're looking to finish that project and get the gravel and whatnot to...
Ledge fields, are we talking up north?
Yes. Yeah, and we actually, the guy left, but we, we took a look on Google Earth and made sure that the alignment of the range was not pointed towards any residential areas.
Athletic fields?
But, oh, no, 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 it's a completely different direction. And I, I mean, it's, it's well within NRA specs, we, we looked at the whole engineering.
Very few residents around there.
Right.
You gotta go a long ways to, to find a, to find anybody resides.
Exactly.
What time of day do they do their firing?
We, we will generally shoot during the day, we do one night fire every year, but generally will be done by ten o'clock.
Yeah, I know, that's a project that's been on as far as the police department for, since at least two thousand, so I'm glad to see you're carrying through with it.
Right.
Just so anybody else who may not have a background on it, if Chief Hottishaw needed to pull one of his officers off that were on duty that could qualify, they would have to travel all the way up to bench rest, which pulled them out far, much further out of town.
Where's bench rest? Where's bench rest?
Up in, right outside in Leamington.
Where does the sheriff's department do their qualifying?
We have one that is down off Ninety-four.
Ninety-four.
It's an area that we've just built.
Okay, and that's privately owned by?
By the sheriff.
By the sheriff.
Or by the county.
Oh, by the county, okay. We would, we might be able to rent you some space out here.
There you go.
A little income coming in off of our investment.
I, I'm pleased to see you doing it. Thank you, Chief.
It's handy, it's so close.
Exactly, and, you know, with, with new guys coming in and trying to get them qualified, it's, you know, luckily the county has their ranges and they've been gracious enough to allow us to use that, but that's a half hour drive down there and back.
At least.
So that's an hour plus an hour on the range, you're, you know, you've got two hours invested in it where five minutes away.
Seven minutes or five minutes?
Get the ball done.
You're there.
I make a motion that we approve the firing range improvements for four thousand, two hundred and forty-six dollars and twenty-five cents.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Kestrelly, seconded by Alderman Clark, that we approve the police department's firing range amount of four thousand, two hundred and forty-six dollars and twenty-five cents. Roll call, please.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alder Person Kestrelly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alder Person Kestrelly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alder Person Kestrelly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Motion carried six-zero.
Thank you, that's all I have.
That's all you have? My next item is Resolution 304, a resolution of the Warrenton Board of Aldermen calling for a public hearing to annex an unincorporated area into the city of Warrenton. Just need a motion on that?
Motion to...
John Stelfick's, this sounds suspicious.
Pardon me?
John Stelfick's, this sounds suspicious.
Suspicious? I don't know about that, that part of the board.
That part of the board.
That part of the board. That part in.
Make a motion to authorize the mayor to sign Resolution 304 for the purpose of annexing property in the city of Warrenton.
Right here, second.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Ock, seconded by Alderman Kestrelly, pay Resolution Number 304, authorizing the mayor to sign a resolution for a public hearing to annex an unincorporated area into the city of Warrenton. Roll call, please.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alder Person Kestrelly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Motion carried six-zero. And we'll have to clear the room.